Okay. I think we're all set. We have a forum and so let's call the meeting together on Tuesday, May 16. And we'll get going. Our first item is a public hearing and this is the public hearing scheduled for 60 Algonquin Drive. Applicant is Nickix and my understanding is that the applicant has sent us a memo and withdrawn this matter and asked for a deferral of the public hearing until I think it was the June 21 hearing. They have to meet the, is it the May 30th, Felicia?
Yeah.
Wait for submission. So for those of those, those of members of the public ourselves who are watching this, this will not be heard today, but we will reschedule the public hearing and continue the public hearing. Have we opened a public hearing on this, Jennifer? Or is this going to be the opening of it?
Yes, it's a continuation from April. So in April, you did open the public hearing. This was a continued public hearing. And just to clarify, the application hasn't been withdrawn. I heard reference to a withdrawal. It hasn't been withdrawn. We're just adjourning the public hearing to June 21st.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you. So one matter already done. So we'll have it penciled in for June 21. If the applicant gets their materials to us by May 30. Okay. The next item is also a public hearing. This is the first we've seen this. This is 40 Way Northway Lot Line Adjustment. This is a matter between the town and Newcastle and a private property owner at 45 Northway. And it's a reconfiguration, a proposal to reconfigure the lot lines. Between the parties. Obviously some eye toward accommodating the chap line in the event that is ever built out or considered further. So I guess the town's been working on this for some time and we have a map. Is Bob still here? Do you have to go to the town, town board meeting?
Yeah, Bob is still here. And if you want Chairman Kirk, Kirk, what I could do is just give a quick summary of the application. It's funny, usually when I'm not here representing the planning board, I do represent several, you know, I represent applicants before other planning boards. So I'm usually on the presenting side of things. I'll put that hat on for tonight for this application on behalf of the town, which is kind of a strange position to be in. So as you mentioned, this is a land swap. It involves property owned by the town of Newcastle and property owned by a private property owner at 45 Northway. It is a land swap or a lot line adjustment for the purposes of further planning for the potential development of the chap line. The chap line being the trail, a proposed trail to connect South Park Crossing and Horace Greeley School with, with Chappaqua, with downtown Chappaqua. The land owned by the town was designated in 1951 as a bird sanctuary. So it is designated parkland. Because of that, the town had to go through an exercise to request permission from New York State to what's called alienate the parkland to basically remove it from its parkland status. We went through that process in 2021 and did get permission from New York State in July of 2021 to alienate the parkland and that's conditioned on the town dedicating the 0.6 acres that's going to be acquired from the private property as parkland. So there's going to be no net loss in, in parkland. So then back in November of 2022, the town board did authorize the entering into of a contract for this land swap and also authorized town staff to prepare subdivision application for review by your board. Now, what's interesting about that is the town board could have exempted itself from this procedure that we're going through right now, but it decided not to. It decided, no, let's go through the process just like all of the other property owners in Newcastle have to, have to go through. So what you see on your screen and is that Bob's here? Are you, are you doing that?
Yes, I'm just showing basically the new lot configuration in yellow.
Right.
Yeah. So maybe Bob, can you run through that lot configuration change and describe the markings that you're making on the plan?
Yes, basically I'm going to just make a mess of this map, but basically where I'm going around in yellow right now used to be the original lot. That was owned by Augusta 45 Northway. So however, the chap line is going to be coming through this way. So what we decided to do was take this piece, I'm cross hatching right now and swap that piece that was owned by Augusta and put it over here, which is a 0.6 acre swap. So basically when we build the chap line, if and when, we wouldn't have to worry about getting any easements or property takings at that time for the chap line. And Mr. Augusta was very amenable to it. And the town attorney spent a lot of time going through the parks, I guess, through the state on that. So basically when everything's all said and done, let me clear everything. Property line, I'm going to use a blue now will be here in blue. That will be the new property line that we have, that we have deeds for, that we have needs and bounds for. That were all prepared by the surveyor to prepare this and we've given that to the attorneys and they will prepare in the deeds for this acquisition once it's properly filed. Also to note, there's two small easements here. The one, the easement I just highlighted in blue is an easement they'll have to get from the town because he has a sewer lot, sewer service line coming down, which ties into the trunk line. And then we'll have to get an easement from Mr. Augusta for this because we have a actual, believe it or not, we have a manhole here which ties into the trunk line as well, which could be used when this Lawrence Farms West gets developed and sewer districts are created. So basically that's what we have right now. And it's just basically going to streamline when the chap line's built in the future.
Hi, Sabrina.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Bob, you do not need to leave yet.
Excuse me, miss?
You do not need to leave to go to the town board yet.
Oh, good. Yeah, because Mark Lukasek's going to text me anyway. But that's all I have to say, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you, Bob. So procedurally for SECR, this is a type two action. Lot line adjustments are now a type two action under the 2019 amendments to SECR. And Sabrina and Bob and myself will answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I have a couple of questions. Is this on? So you guys can hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Yes.
So the private property owner is fully on board with this? Yes?
Yeah. Yes, we met with them many, many months ago. I've been having several communications with them. Emily Westbrook of Keenan Bean has been discussing with him. He's fully on board. As a matter of fact, we gave him this whole application to review. He said, it's fine. Thank this very much. He's fully on board. Yes, sir.
Great. And I'm just curious to what, what, do you guys have any sense of what percentage of the proposed chap line area is in the town's control at this point? Now, how close does this bring us to a full control?
That would, I would defer to Bob and Sabrina for that question as far as the planning of the chap line goes.
I want to say we're probably from the town's perspective, it's a combination of county property, town property and school district property. There's a handful of private properties. Bob, do you have a sense?
Are you trying to ask how far along we are with the project itself?
No, no. With how many private properties we need to obtain easements?
For the properties that we need easements over, which, how many of those properties have been secured? And are there any other ones that we need to do a land swap like this for?
Okay, I understand. Thank you, guys. There's four properties, I believe, to the south that we've met with on several instances and Jill has been meeting with them and having communications with them. I'm not quite sure how that would transpire right now because quite honestly, when I spoke to Vivek last week, the three of the four property owners to the south, they're all new owners. So I would imagine Jill would have to meet with them again to see what their thoughts are on allowing any type of easements or doing any type of land swap. So again, there's all three new owners out of the four south of Mr. Vivek's property, if that answers your question.
Got it. Okay. And my last question, Jennifer, you, you mentioned that we're going through this process even though the town board could have exempted itself from this process. Just to be clear, you, you mean the planning board reviewing a lot line change? Is that right?
Correct.
And is there a reason that they chose that? And does choosing that prevent them from making the same choice later for some of these other ones that they may have to do down the line?
It doesn't prevent them. It doesn't tie them or bind them for future determinations. I was not part of that decision-making process, but I would suspect that it was for, you know, transparency purposes to make sure that this application is vetted the same way as, as, you know, any other private property owner that has to go through a lot line adjustment process. What's good for the goose is good for the gander.
And by the way, I did, and obviously I invited Vivek and his wife to this meeting, but they had previous engagements. So they could not make it.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd just like to say that not that the town board or anybody needs my commendation, but I do commend them for, for for taking this forward in the same vein as a, as a otherwise other private property owner would before the town. I think that that's, that's an admirable way to go. I think it's such a good precedent for, you know, future acquisitions that may be required for this purpose, but also for other actions the town board goes through that might, might require other board review. I think it's an excellent way to go myself.
Yeah, I can't take credit for someone else's idea. This was actually Jill's idea, Jill Shapiro. So that's all up to her.
Great. Yeah, great. I took it as just a very positive comment, sort of like the, the theme song from The Spy Who Loved Me. And that was, no one could do it better than the planning board. So, but that's just me. Any other comments? Do we have any, anyone with a hand raised from the public on this? Carrie Freedom, anyone with a hand up?
No hands.
No hands are raised.
Okay, terrific. All right. Unless there are any other questions or thoughts, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's carried for zero. I guess what we should do is we will have to drop a resolution. So is there a motion to request staff to drop a resolution for our next meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, great. So our next item is an informal hearing and this is regarding Chap, our Crossing East Village. This is an application for a limited rock crushing operation. Apparently the applicant's old brother says needs to crush rock onsite and they have put in a rock crushing application. Bob has looked at it. So we'll turn to Sabrina and Bob for comments on, on their application. I mean, to the extent that you guys have been drafted, get back to the town board meeting.
So my comments are very, are very general. The applicant submitted all of the submission requirements that we have previously asked applicants who were placing rock crushers on their property. They are within the noise limits of the town code and the distance limits that have been set by the town code. And everything seems to comply with the noise ordinance, which is enforced by the police department. We had one public comment about wetting and trying to control dust. And Bob, you can speak to that, but that is a normal course of procedure when it comes to rock crushing operations. And there is no other comments that I had other than it is consistent with our codes. And if there's issues with noise, it would be enforced by the police department under the noise ordinance. Bob?
Thank you, Sabrina. Thank you, Chairman. I just had some minor comments, one and two, basically they had some notes put on their cover letter. I recommended that those be put on the site plan as well. So it's duplicative. It's in both areas. It makes it a lot easier if we have to enforce it. And the second note was obviously this would need a permit from Westchester County Department of Health Air Quality because they do oversee rock crushers and it would need a permit from them prior to Tom issuing a permit for the actual rock crushing activities. And again, they do oversee that and it does require them to wet down the application during the crushing activities because there is some dust associated with that. And those are the two comments I have on my memo, Chairman.
Okay, great. Do we, do we fully understand what the, the need is for the rock crushing? Is this to generate rock that's going to be used for trap rock or something else onsite?
Yes, they have.
Having it taken away, construction need as well as a convenience and cost need?
Greg Otis there? I think, I see. Is he at the meeting, Greg Otis?
Yes. Hi.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I forget, I'll let you answer that.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, this material was generated onsite during the stormwater piping installation from the former building 700 up to the East Village. We would like to process the material that was removed into smaller usable orange mineous stone to be placed within the structural fill areas on the site. So all material is proposed to remain onsite.
Okay, terrific. Great. Anyone else? Any questions or anything else that Greg, you'd like to fill us in on?
No, as, as mentioned in the cover, in the cover letter, this is a temporary rock crushing operation. We anticipate it to last probably three weeks, possibly four weeks. We are not planning to operate the crusher the full eight hours or, you know, what is permissible from eight o'clock to 4:30. And we're anticipating the process about 200 to 300 yards per day. And again, it is a temporary crushing operation. It is a portable crusher, though we are proposing to keep it within one location, which is the, the approved material stockpile area up in phase five there. On the, on the map that was provided in the application, you'll see that the closest structure was noted as approximately 300 feet away.
Right.
Though I believe, I'm not positive, I believe that structure is a pool, pool house structure on that property. However, we did utilize that as kind of the closest structure. There's noise purposes as well.
Right. So to be clear, Greg, the, the application indicates that this will be 15 to 20 days. That's not necessarily 15 or 20 consecutive days. It, it could be actually a full month. Out of the month, you'll see 15 to 20 days of activity.
No, actually, Mr. Chairman, we are proposing that to be a continuous duration.
Okay.
Once, you know, because we are renting the rock crusher. And so it's in our best interest to perform that as quick as possible due to costs associated with the machine.
Is this something that would be subject to any kind of weather problems or can you crush rock, even if it's raining?
Generally speaking, we can operate it in, in all weather types.
Right.
And as Bob mentioned, we do have, you know, adequate water supply onsite that would be utilized to control, you know, any dust conditions that are generated. And we would, if, if approved, we would formally notify Bob, Bob's department and Tom's department, as well as the commencement date. And so to, to make sure that the town is fully aware of when the machine is operational.
Right. And again, no holidays, no weekends and limited between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM on workdays.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, I, I, I'm trying, not trying to catch anywhere or do anything else, but it might be that you might want to change the application from 15 to 20 to maybe a little something a bit longer just to give you some flexibility. I hate to see you guys come back in because you need three more days and it's just, it's kind of nutty.
Okay.
Just like that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I've, I got, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I think for Sabrina, I just want to understand the, why this is before us? Like what, what, what's, what's being asked of us? What, why?
It's before you so that they can locate the rock crusher on the site. Typically, as part of a planning board application, if a rock crusher is needed, you are informed of that. And, and a location on the site is identified for the rock crusher and you address the questions of how the rock is going to be used, how much truck traffic, if any, is associated with the crusher? What is the noise level? What is the closest dwelling? You know, so it's really an element of a site plan application that was not examined as part of the East Village application. So we're bringing it back to you because staff did not feel comfortable just issuing a permit for this because it has been an element that the planning board has approved of in the past.
Understood. That's extremely helpful. Thank you. And I appreciate you referring it to us. So, so a couple of follow-ups. One, why was this location selected?
Sure. This, this location was selected as part of the approved material stockpile area that was originally approved for the, for the project. So the rock that was removed as part of the construction was stockpiled in the approved material stockpile area. And it also happens to be the farthest, we believe, the farthest point from all other dwellings adjacent to the property.
Well, from the map you've selected is clearly not the farthest from all other dwellings, but, but you're telling me that that's where the rock is.
That's correct. Correct.
But it's not. Yeah, you know, it's like my dad's old joke, why, why did, you know, they asked the guy why you robbed the bank? And he said, that's where the money is. All right. So same here. That, that's where the rock is. And so that's where you want the crusher. Okay. So then a follow-up or a separate question. You mentioned that you won't be running the machine all eight hours or whatever it is. Why not? I mean, would that not make it the job end sooner?
Well, yes, yes and no. Point number one is that it will utilize personnel and, and other equipment that can also be utilized at other locations on the site. So we, we don't anticipate staffing that machine for the full eight hours a day. You know, it's very likely that we'll run it for four hours today, you know, three hours tomorrow. And typically try to balance the material that we process with the locations that it's also needed at.
Is this something you would be able to decide as in the predetermined hours? Or it's the eight hours and it could be four hours this morning and three hours the next afternoon?
That, that would be very difficult to predetermine. We are able to, you know, approximate the overall duration that the rock crusher equipment would be on site. But it would be very difficult for us to kind of fine tune the hours, you know, for those windows.
So I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure I understood how the rock got here. Is this, is this spoil from the excavation to do the first phase of the town homes? Or is this excavation that comes out of the construction for the retail part of the site?
This, this, the, the rock that was generated was the result of installing the stormwater piping network from the former building 700 up to the East Village.
Okay. And so it's, it's part of this, the consequence of this particular residential permit?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. So there, there's other equipment that must be associated, but something has to feed the crusher, right? And you, you must have some sort of a excavator or something that's working along with it. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. This would employ front-end loaders and an excavator, which are currently operating within the project.
And so you're going to crush the rock and then leave it here and then move it to the site as you need it?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Greg, I have a question to follow up Tom's last question. With this other equipment running, perhaps some running simultaneously with the crusher, what's the aggregate noise levels off-site? I mean, with the rock crusher, as far as, as I recall, you were very close to our maximum, I think it was 57 and a half. And our max was 60. So you're okay. And by the way, a very interesting thing I learned from Sabrina and Bob this morning was that the police department is actually trained in this area and they have equipment that can actually test for this. So that's an important piece of information for the public to know in the event that they feel it's, it's too loud. But how is, is that, is that a concern that we need to look at?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do not believe it is a concern. I believe that the equipment that is supporting the rock crushing activity is already permitted to be onsite. And this, I don't believe it, it really is an aggregate. I believe that it's, you know, independent on its own, generating that noise level. And that's how it should be evaluated.
Sabrina, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, again, whether it's coming from one machine or two or three machines running simultaneously, at some point, it seems to me that if it exceeds whatever, you know, this decimal levels we, we set forth in our code, at some point, it starts to become a nuisance to neighbors.
Correct.
I, I just don't, I, I, we've never had that before or had this question before because usually it's, it's, you know, this is much larger operation. So there are things going on all the time. But anyway, thoughts on that?
I, you know, I, obviously I'm not an expert in this, but I, I, then we can probably, maybe Bob, is Bob with us still?
Yes.
Have some thoughts on this, but I, I think that, I think it's correct that, that, that these decimal levels don't aggregate to a greater, a higher level. I think it's the one that is, you know, the, the highest level is the one that you're going to hear. And anything else isn't, doesn't get you to a higher level of decimals. And unless I'm wrong, I think that's correct.
Okay, that's interesting then. Good.
But I could be, I could be wrong, but that's my, that's my memory on this.
You saying when one of my kids is loud, the other kid is also loud? It doesn't add up? It feels like it adds up. But it does ask the question, it's sort of, yeah. It, it sort of raises the question about enforcement, right? If, if, if there is a question of how loud is, you know, is this exceeding the, the noise requirement?
Yeah.
What's being measured?
Again, again, I think if you recall, we had this at Belay and, you know, I'm just going by from empirical experience here, really. We had Belay, right? And I think Belay was very close. They had the rock. We had Beli, right? And I think Beli was very close. They had the rock crusher up there and I don't believe there were any complaints. And he had to use the same type of equipment, uh, you know, to move the material in, to take it out. And to lay it down in place and compact it, so. There were no complaints there, so I mean, if there are complaint uh complaints. The people that may think it's louder than what it should be would most likely call us. We would defer them to the police. The police do have measuring equipment on this. And they would go to the property line and take the measurements and that would, to me, be the proof in the pudding of whether they're too loud or not.
Sounds sounds, sounds good to me. Sounds rational, reasonable. It's it's more of a question of interest after Tom opened that uh that line of question, which I thought was. Uh, I just didn't know where we were, where we were going with it.
Bob, uh, we we have, uh, I think a member of the public that wants to speak here in person.
Okay.
Uh, hi, Don Light from Thirty Seven Cowen Lane. Uh, I am the one resident in Chappaqua who has had the luxury of watching these piles of rock and dirt. Build on the back of my yard, so uh it's been uh it's been fun to watch. Um, I have two uh two questions. The first uh has been just a little bit, and that's the wedding of the the job. Uh, it I I it's good to hear that the that will take place around the rock crushing, but the question I have is is that. Is there a wedding process that takes place generally on the property? The trucks come back to the back of my yard, even on Saturdays, you got, you've got. Dump trucks back there, you've got backhoes back there. They are generating a lot of dirt in a lot of dust in that process. Going from the the buildings that are being built to where my yard is. And so is there a process? Is there an effort to kind of wet the roadway, if you will? Because this project's getting a little expensive for me personally. I've now had to power wash my house twice. We have to have somebody come in, clean our backyard furniture on a regular basis. And we're not even talking about the cost that's gonna, that's I'm gonna have to incur on putting in trees to help to block the 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 view. So a- and again, this is not, this is a not a complaint, it's a frustration. Because uh things get dirty uh and and it has not been a great process. Secondly, uh, I I know we've talked about um. That this is going to be a Monday through Friday thing. Uh, and that's good to hear, but there is a lot of work that goes on behind that rock pile. Uh, and and just for clarification purposes, the house that the gentleman referenced. Uh, that is a garage and it's a guest apartment up top for when people are in from out of town. So there are, there are people occasionally living in there. It's likely for a long weekend or whatever it might be. But that rock pile is literally just behind the house. And on Saturday mornings, there are, there are trucks back there, there are backhoes back there that are doing a lot of work. I am not personally concerned about the noise from the the crushing as long as it's kept during the week. Because myself and and my neighbors kind of adjoining, most of us are either in the city or working and all. Their job needs to be get done, get done, we're not going to reject to that. It really is this Saturday noise that's a bit annoying. Um, and and this dust problem that 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 has been in issue since the day they broke ground.
Okay, thank you. Bob, uh, didn't we have provisions built into our um uh building uh schedule, et cetera? Regarding dust and wetting down of the of the uh the areas that are going to be, uh, you know, uh, subject to excavation?
That is correct. That's right in the erosion control in the Blue Book by DEC. Uh, we had issues with some dust uh when they first started the project. Uh, and that's an enforcement issue. If there's any complaints, we can go out there, Terry, go out there. And tell them they just got to water it down with a water rag and along the road before they have the heavy equipment. Drive along the road and that's going to be more prevalent right now because obviously, as everyone knows, it's quite dry, no rain this week, so it could be an issue. Uh, but that is typically in the code, it's right under the erosion control, so. Uh, we will take a look at it and make certain that they do what they should do uh with the watering of the roadway for the hauling course, hauling roadway.
Okay, well, I think um I I I don't recall the details. It's been so long since we approved that. But in addition to the roadway, I thought that there were other provisions that the other areas that were exposed would have to be subject to uh wetting from periodically. You know, wetting periodically, not just roadways, but, you know, hills and staging areas, et cetera. Uh, I mean, not to cause a flood or cause uh earth move, but, you know, it's, I I I think um. This is a very valid complaint and I think it is something that we really need to look at on the enforcement side. Uh, from the department, we could um tighten that up a little bit.
We will do that, uh, and you're right, though. They're supposed to stabilize uh with either erosion control material. Uh, hay and seed or some sort of fabric over over any type of uh fill material or dirt that's left. Out without being stabilized within maybe, I think, two weeks, so. We will look at that. We're gonna have another construction meeting coming up. There'll be a topic of discussion and we'll definitely uh keep mind of that when we go out there during our inspections.
So, I'm sorry. I I have um had the pleasure of going out and actually visiting the site, um, but. I am familiar with projects of this size and I was actually surprised and I did visit the model homes and talk to the sales representative. And uh, I think there was someone here from Toll Brothers a little while ago who talked about the progress of the job. And unless I'm mistaken, they're moving a lot more quickly than they thought they were going to. Um, and that means, I think, because the original plan was for some pretty extensive land clearing and excavation throughout this very large site. And the original thought was, or impression I got, or conclusion I came to, was that it was going to be sort of done in stages so that. The aggregate of all of this activity would be not all at the same time that it would be. And it seems to me that it's probably true, again, I haven't been out there, but. The excavation and clearing and uh and grading is happening at pace here. And uh uh the result is an area which is stripped of its vegetation. Some of it's filled, some of it's cut, and it's, unless I'm mistaken, it's probably pretty much all bare earth. Unless it has been treated as um as we would ask it to be treated, so. There may be some extraordinary sort of measures that need to be taken at this point that weren't anticipated. In order to uh to make uh uh the neighbors who are next to this excavation and this construction. And not have to suffer the the consequences of it.
Well, uh, Greg does keep a running tally of the areas of disturbance and, as you know, based on DEC and DEP. They're not supposed to disturb more than five acres every time we have our pre-construction meeting. That is a topic of discussion. So uh, if that's the case, I can, we'll ask Greg right here and now. To make sure he prepares a plan that shows all the areas of disturbance uh to be confirmed by the town as well, so we do that. So he's been good at uh submitting these maps to us every time we have a construction meeting every month or so. So, uh, Greg, could you please do that and update your plan to make certain everything's under the five acres?
Absolutely, absolutely. And as as Mr., as Bob had mentioned. Um, we are, we are controlled to that disturbance limit. Uh, Toll Brothers also employs a pretty stringent watering program uh with water trucks on site. Uh, there's plenty of water available to us. Um, the site improvements are moving very quickly. Uh, we are planning to generally complete all internal roadways this year. And, you know, that that kind of movement is also a function of the sales as well. Uh, when people come in and want to purchase the lots, you know, they're expecting the home to be turned around within a certain timeframe as well. Um, so we are working very closely with Bob's department, uh, working very closely with the building department as well. And again, we we do employ uh the onsite water trucks and we do have. Quite a large extent of the water mains, the new water mains are approved by the Department of Health for operation. And so we don't have any concerns with water supply on site. And we will definitely look into uh uh the concerns that were brought up tonight. And make sure that they are addressed for for all.
So yeah, I I wanna uh add to Tom Crowley's comment. During the course of this uh segment of the uh application, we spent quite a bit of time on on looking at the phases. Um, and one of the reasons we looked at in such detail was to avoid a wide open situation. So notwithstanding DEP and DEC's um concerns and and regulatory um guidelines. Uh, one of the reasons I thought we looked at those, that staging was also to add another level of protection against this kind of situation. I'm not suggesting for a moment that you ought to uh not move forward and 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 get the project done. But I'm wondering if you would take a look and when you prepare prepare the plan for the 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 building department to look at this. Would you consider uh just earmarking and 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 telling us where we have changed things? I mean, this is basically a change in the way this this project is proceeding and basically a change in the phasing. Uh, probably all good, but I think we should have a detail on this. We have some sort of understanding of. Just how much is exposed at any one given time? Is it more? Is it less? Is it basically on target with what we anticipated? Um, I I'm a little bit concerned hearing that, uh, you know, in the back of the piles and and the, you know, and and this neighbor in Cowden. Is being subject to these kinds of um of additional costs and frustrations. When we spent a good deal of time on this with with the applicant in trying to um assuage those and and avoid those problems. So I I think it would be helpful, uh, as I recall, there are five phases, weren't there, Tom, from this, so that we looked at in some detail? And I'm wondering if uh if, you know, for whatever reasons, market uh reasons, which is all good, um, just uh building. Reasons, all good, uh, if we have deviated at all from what the phasing had been.
Yeah, Miss uh Mr. Chairman, uh, Toll Brothers is not deviating from the approved phasing. Um, with respect to activities behind the pile. This, the area in phase five was was designated as a material. Storage stockpile.
Right.
So as you can imagine, there is activity, there is quite a bit of activity to go, you know, pick up materials, bring them down to the site. Um, so and at all times, um, you know, we are in constant communication. Uh, with 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 Bob's department, with the building department, with the DEP as well. Performing weekly inspections over, you know, the disturbance area. Um, we feel that we are fully in compliance and, you know, to address the concern of dust. Um, it's a very challenging uh item to deal with on construction sites. Uh, we have been diligent about watering programs, especially during periods without any rainfall events. And we believe that we are in full compliance with the approved plans uh by your board. And um however, we are open to any suggestions uh that the town may have. Um, or additional items, but uh the phasing is per the plans. Um, we're not deviating from that. We're not going to different areas because of marketing. However, with that said, there are sales and new homeowners that would like to move in. And we are continuing to progress the project.
Yep.
Is is work permitted on Saturdays?
Work is permitted on Saturdays in the town code.
Okay, but the rock crushing application uh is for Monday through Friday only?
That is correct.
And how long is this process? How much of the process is remaining in terms of the? You know, the dust creation, creating activities, so to speak. Uh, in terms of time, in terms of time.
Well, that's a, I I I might have to defer to Bob, but dust could be created at any time during a project. Dust is generally created at a larger extent during the land development activities. Versus the home building activities. And so that's, you know, but even during the home building activities, we still employ the same dust control measures. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the 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 land, um, the site improvements. Um, will generally be completed at the end of this year. Um, at which time the home building operations would continue on for the next probably, you know, two years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I would, I would just, um, um, first of all, I've. I've I've been to the site, uh, not on the site, but obviously I've been to Jeff Cross Crossing and I've seen the homes that are going up. And I've visited the uh model homes and I think you guys are doing a a pretty terrific job from. Uh, the product just looked great to me. And I think it's gonna be a a pretty terrific neighborhood by the time we're done and I'm fully supportive of the project. But I think I heard you say that you would be open to any suggestions that the town might have. To uh deal with the concern that we're raising. I would prefer that um that you come up with some suggestions uh for us. I don't think it's up for, up to us to to uh come up with these ideas. I think that it would be better if the the people on site who are doing the activity. Um, provide um some suggestions about what they could do, if anything. Um, and review that uh with Bob and and others in town, whoever might be uh the appropriate uh person to talk to.
Absolutely. We we speak with Bob and his his department almost on a daily basis. Uh, we believe that the approved plans were very well thought out. And that's what we are following for construction. And again, the dust control measures are being implemented on the site. And I think if, you know, at, if the town did have a suggestion. Outside of the approved plans, we would absolutely entertain that and incorporate it accordingly. You know, we 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 take pride in the product that we build, the activities that we conduct. And if there are any suggestions from outside agencies, uh, those are always welcome.
I guess I didn't make myself clear, or maybe I didn't, you don't agree with me, but. I was suggesting that you come up with, the Toll Brothers come up with what they might be able to do to help mitigate the situation. Because it's your activity, you're you're the ones who are going to have to, if there is some conclusion here, for extra activity, you're the guys who are gonna have to do it.
Understood.
It could be like a partnership in coming to some sort of conclusion here.
What? It absolutely is. It absolutely is. Yep, understood.
To be a little quandary, I would say, yeah, go ahead.
I think what what ended up happening was that that the leveling of all the trees uh from the west. Where there's construction going on to where we are. Uh, we we took down a lot of trees in that spot, probably too much, because the wind, what the the wind comes right over. All of that barren area now, and then because there's not as many trees there, you've just got that much more dust flowing through. And maybe if we kept more trees there, it would be less of a dust problem for me, uh, but, you know, it is what it is.
I guess the question is, if that's the only place that it's being stockpiled. If there are other locations where it can be reduced, where there's two stockpile areas or something. Um, and there's less, less for the dust to sort of fly in the area of a particular resident. And again, I don't know if this is being felt by all the different folks who are close enough, or is it just this gentleman here? But I think it might be worth looking into uh just the location where the stockpile is. And seeing if that needs to be split up, just as a suggestion.
Sabrina, Jennifer, um, what what action are we to take on this? Uh, is this considered to be a formal amendment to the site plan that we need to produce a resolution?
Correct. Yes to both. Yeah, the way you've handled it before is a site plan amendment, uh, which requires a a public hearing and a resolution.
So, um. I don't think we're looking at any additional information, so perhaps we can schedule this for a public hearing at our next meeting. And also uh request staff to prepare a resolution in anticipation of opposing a public hearing. Does that make sense?
Yes. I think it does. And Bob, just so you know, your your audio is starting to dip out a little bit. I don't know if you need to plug something in or.
Okay, thank you. Felicia, can we schedule that for our our next meeting as a public hearing? Do we need a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yes, we can.
Is there a motion then to schedule a public hearing with this matter or next meeting?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Do you have enough? Is there enough time between now and the next meeting for you to draft that resolution?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the date of that meeting?
June 6th.
Thank you.
My question is, are we requesting Toll Brothers to come up with some sort of solution for what we just heard today? As part of this public hearing?
I I think, yes, I mean, the bottom line is we've asked them to think of this. Think of some solutions, whether it's a combination of additional wedding, additional fabric protection, moving, using another location. But I think it's fair that we've, you know, rather than laboring it this evening. And I think the notion of putting it back to Toll Brothers to give us some thoughts and. If it makes sense for them, it'll make sense for us and incorporate those.
Makes sense.
So is there a motion also to direct staff to draw a tentative resolution for this application?
So, second. All in favor? Aye. Great. Motion is carried.
Terrific. Great. Thank you so much for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you.
Okay, we have a matter on the agenda that is not going to be. So 123 Graves, 123 Random Forest Drive. The applicant's is not quite ready. So we'll see this at another time when we have more information, more details. We have a request for an extension on the Chapel West Central School District. We've seen this very many times in terms of extensions. The standpoint of staff, are there issues or problems with this request?
No, there are not.
Chairman, I don't know if you saw, but we did. Well, first of all, the there's a representative from the applicant here, Allison Fauzner. On behalf of the applicant. So I just want to alert you, Chairman, in case you didn't see it, there was an email that came in from. From members of the public, from members of the public. A rather extensive email late in the day. So we should probably discuss that as part of the the extension request as well.
If I if I may, Jen, I don't know that we need to discuss it as part of the the extension request. I think it's is subject matter for if a final subdivision application is submitted. Because the information in the email may raise new issues that would cause us to reopen SECRE, but to discuss it at this point, I don't know that it's. Any relevance to the time extension.
But maybe I should clarify then. So what the the email did state is that there was. A new law that was recently passed as part of the the New York State budget. Called the Unmarked Burial Graves Act. And my understa- so the standard of review for an extension is the extension should be granted as a matter of course, unless there's. A material change in the project, the physical site, or the law. That relates to the project. So what I think the the member of the public is suggesting is that there is a change in the law that would affect. The project. However, my understanding is that this statute is not like a no build statute. It's not a statute that would preclude construction on the site. Rather, what it requires is that if remains are found, if there is. An unmarked grave that is found, the developer would be required to stop. Would be required to notify the coroner or the the county medical examiner, wherever the authority is. And then tribal representatives would actually be called in, a committee of of representatives would be called in to determine the next steps. So it's not something that would affect this approval. It may have an impact. At construction, but not at this stage. And I don't know if the applicant has, you know, any other. Comments on that or if the board has any questions, but I just want to make it clear for the record that we did review that and and. I don't consider that to be a material change in the law that would affect. The extension request on the table tonight. As far as the other material in the email, I agree with you, Sabrina. That's information related to SECRE. There's no application currently pending before the board, as we've discussed at previous extensions. If and when the applicant comes back for a final plat approval. That's when we will have those discussions about whether or not SECRE needs to be reopened.
Right, and we've been consistent with that. Yeah, we've been consistent with that statement over all these months and all these many extensions. That if in fact they come back to final, that would be an appropriate time to consider a material change that would. Require us to reengage study on the SECRE. So I I think we've been very, very consistent. We've had all kinds of material sent to us over the many months that we've seen this extended. So I did, excuse me, I did see the email. But I I also consider it to be one one more thing that we would, we would certainly give weight to and consideration to. If and when we ever see a final subdivision application.
Thanks for that distinction, Jen.
Thank you. Any other questions? On the extension? From the standpoint of staff, I mean, any issues or questions? I don't know if Bob is back, but I know that.
Bob is not back yet.
They were having all kinds of issues and problems with the DEP and, you know, they had to, they had to solve those.
There is a representative from the school district here tonight, Bob. I don't know if you want to give them an opportunity to speak.
There's anything that they would like to add, that would be super. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, town staff. My name is Allison Fauzner. I'm an associate with the law firm Cuddy and Fader. I'm covering for my colleague Kristen Motello, who's been before you in connection with our prior extension request. As far as the process with the DEP goes, I am aware that we received comments and your town engineer was CC'd on those comments from the New York City Watershed Commissioner. In March. Like in more extensive comments and responses that there are requiring and updates to plan sets. I am aware that we're currently processing through those. And as detailed in our April 25th letter, that Kristen submitted, the property is a subject of a pending litigation. I can't make any comments on it because my firm is not representing the the school district in the litigation, but that is something that is also pending.
Okay. Great. Any questions, comments from board members? Excuse me, is is there a motion then to grant the request of extension to the applicant?
How long of an extension?
It requires 90 days.
How long? It's 90 days. It sounds like there's a little bit of turmoil going on. Is 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 that enough time to? Not resolve, everything needs to be resolved, but resolve what whatever it takes to for us to consider the application again?
I can't speak to whether 90 days will be enough for the pending litigation to be resolved. If the board is willing to entertain a further extension, of course, we would have no objection.
There's no way it's going to be resolved in 90 days. I mean, I mean, we we keep.
We keep doing this.
Extending this. I mean, is there any downside to us extending it for six months, let's say?
I I don't think, I look, I don't think it's going to be all be resolved. In in 90 days. I I think it would be reasonable to extend for six months, so basically three 90 day extensions. Right? Is that the math? No, that's not the math. Sorry. I can't do math, guys.
So I mean, I would be in favor of of a six month extension.
290. Thank you.
That makes sense.
Oh, that's embarrassing.
Jen, that's 180 days.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's a little bit of my math knowledge.
Great. So is there a motion then to grant the the extension for 180 days that's been requested by the applicant? To extend it beyond the 90 that they requested, but to go to 180? Second. All in favor? Okay, motion is carried. Our next item is an extension request on Balco, which is 6th County Lane. This is a little bit more complicated. Jennifer, perhaps you could explain that? That it will get more be involved in this extension?
I don't have any notes up, but um, right, so. Hi, Alan, how are you? Alan Pilch requested an extension of the tree removal permit that was granted, a one year extension. However, I think the additional extensions are required here. So in your resolution that was approved. In May of last year, I think it was May of last year. It requires the site plan to be submitted for signature within 60 days, which was not done. And then it also says that site plan approval is expires within one year. If the applicant hasn't received a building permit by that time. So in addition to extending the tree removal permit, I think the board also should consider extending. The time period for submitting the site plan for signature. And also an extension of the time period that the applicant needs to receive a building permit. And Alan, maybe you can. Explain to the board where you are in the process and and how long it might take. To submit the site plan for signature and then receive a building permit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I I'd like to sort of explain why it ended up taking so long. To be in this position because clearly we could not submit site plans for signature by. You, Mr. Chairman, unless we had health department approval, because that was key to it. And I'll just sort of run through some of the timeline. It did take a long time. We actually just got the approved plans and they're sitting here on my desk. We just got May 10th, which is last week. And one of the reasons was we did perk testing. I'll just sort of explain. We did percolation testing in August. And they came in very, very slow, between 45 and 60 minutes per inch, which were required to redesign the septic system. And we ended up submitting that. I went back with Robert Balco as to what to do when the system's over 1,000 linear feet. So we we ended up redesigning the system using an enhanced treatment unit. And and using not just PVC pipes and trenches, but also infiltrator units. Because what it does is permit you to reduce the amount of area that you need. Otherwise, it would have taken up. A large portion of the property just to create the septic system. So we submitted. Back to the health department in October. We did the testing in in late August. We did the, we submitted in October 22. Health department comes back in December and requests additional. Percolation tests and deep hole tests. Now, that's in December, not always the best month to do it, even arrange it with them, because they have to witness it. But we actually did the testing. Fortunately, it was a mild winter and we did the testing in January. We updated the plans and sent it back into them in February. Then finally, two months later in April, they come back to us and say, everything's fine. They got all the information they need. Send us five sets of plans and then we'll we'll approve them. And so on May 10th, we finally got that approval. So that's why it took so long for us to do this. I I absolutely never expected it to take seven months. Before this board, unfortunately, but that's. In the meantime, also, we we've had communication, just so you know, with one of the other requests for. Part of the conditions of the approval was to put signage up along 133 on Somers Town Road. And we've also been in contact with Brandon Roebuck of the DOT. He's had communications with Bob Seoli as well, and we've also worked that out and we've actually submitted a plan. For signage along Route on on Somers Town Road and the perm 33 permit. So these sort of external things are what's really kind of delayed this process. As to when we could submit these plans. In the meantime, also while all this is going on, I was responding, I was doing all the rest of this stuff on the plans. All the items that were in the conditions of the approval. My intention is to submit it for your signature next week. Because that's where we are. Now that we have the health department approval, we're in a position to do that, because as I said, I knew there was. You know, unless we had the health department approval, I could not submit these plans for for your signature, because that's just not going to work.
Yeah.
So that so that's where we are.
Okay, terrific. Great. So does that sound reasonable that? Give another 60 days beyond. Jennifer, we talked about what, early July, mid-July for the the extension on the site plan?
Yeah, what whatever the board feels is reasonable. I I would suggest, you know, rather than do the math and calculate the dates. What you might want to do is just set a date. You know, instead of figure out how many days, because we're actually, you know, 360 something days. From the, you know, when it expired, when the the time period expired for the applicant to submit the site plan for signature. So I would recommend setting a date by which. The applicant needs to submit for signature.
Okay.
Well, I guess, what does the applicant, what is the applicant requesting? What's the need for amount of time?
But what I, what I, my intention is to submit the the plans, the revised plans. Updated, you know, responding to the conditions of the approval. Some of it is graphic, very little, there's no real substantive change to the plans. A lot of it's just identifying the nuclear and grading limit line on the plans. And so my intention is to submit it next week. That, you know, and I I assume that we'll, you know, we'll submit it. There may be comments on it from the town engineer. And I see he's back. And if there's comments from the town engineer, we'll respond to them, because I I will tell you, the. The client, Robert Balco, has been most anxious to move this forward. So, you know, we'll respond to them, but I I I wouldn't want to be in a position to request it again when we might might need, you know, a week just to finalize the. Conditions of the approval.
That's exactly the the point of my question. I mean, it sounds like you're diligently pursuing this and 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 I don't want to give a short extension that's not sufficient. So what, you know, from my perspective, whatever is the minimum amount of time, that's the appropriate amount of time. That's that's what I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with.
I I I'm thinking that 60 days. I said initially said 45, but I think 60 days is reasonable in which to to move forward from here. So if you want to pick a time like, you know, some midpoint in July or something, I think that'd be fine. I think that would be sufficient, you know, that that submission is made next week. I'm assuming we can get some comments back from the town engineer within a few weeks, and then we respond to them and hopefully we'll have all the comments addressed by that time. As I say, the letter is ready to go back in.
Is that the, is that our second meeting in July? We could use it, use that date.
July 18 is your second meeting. Do I have that correct, everyone?
So if that's the second meeting in July, you know, that's. For lots of reasons, it's important for you to do it, because otherwise you'll be held up till September. Because we, you know, we don't meet in August.
Right. Agreed.
So it's a little bit more than 60 days. Hopefully that's more than enough, so.
And if we somehow we managed to get this done earlier, perhaps we could. Meet with the board prior to that, just to.
Sure.
If that's needed.
Yeah, I don't think it is at this point, but in any event, if it is, it is, and and we have time, some flexibility there to schedule you. Great. So is there a motion to grant the extension requested for this matter to July 18?
So there's three different time periods. Let me just. If I write that you're doing a motion on the time period required to submit the site plan for signature. Right till July 18. There's also the time period to receive a building permit.
Is that one year from that date?
So the current expiration is one year from the date of approval, so we're we're past that at this point.
Right.
So do you want to do one year from July 18? I think that makes sense.
I think it makes sense because.
Because that's consistent with the timeframe from the original. Because that's consistent with the timeframe from the original approval.
Yep. Do anything shorter, I think we'll just be uh having the applicant come back and back and forth a number of times.
And then for consistency purposes, having the tree removal permit um fall in line with that time period as well. One year from July eighteen.
Yep, dovetail construction, yeah. Makes good sense. So anyway, come on, there's your motion all served up for you.
Motioned.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yep, take care, Alan. Okay, we have uh two sets of minutes. We have the minutes of April four, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, very brief. Anyone have any questions, comments, changes?
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of uh April four, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. And we have um the minutes of uh Tuesday, April eighteenth. Um. Any thoughts, questions, changes? I didn't have anything at all in these places. Very great, thank you.
I just have a very technical question here. Um, in terms of votes on, is virtual considered an absent?
No.
Okay, so on April fourth, um, the I is in the absence. I think the virtual is considered an absent, but on the April eighteenth, you know, it would have arrived. Oh, I see. You weren't there for that vote. Got it. Okay, just checking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of April eighteenth?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, the last item was, it's, there's nothing really on the agenda, but there was some talk of just uh briefly talking about process with regard to um North Greeley. And there was some uh expression uh by by some board members that we should send a memo to the town board and recommend that we get together two weeks later uh with a joint meeting, perhaps with the ARB as well as ourselves and the town board. Uh, taking a look at the North Greeley, specifically fifty North Greeley, but North Greeley itself, et cetera, and um uh, any thoughts on that? Um, do we want to send a memo out? Making that request?
Uh, yeah, um, I think so. Um, but uh first, uh Jennifer, maybe um you could help me out here with some um information on the special permit uh situation here. I understand, I know that there already is a standing uh section in our town code on special permits. And um, whatever, say something wrong here, just interrupt me and let me know. And that within, which would probably be momentarily. Get ready. Yeah, just get ready. Matter of fact, I'll stop talking now.
Just um
You're good so far.
We're okay. So far you said good evening. That's okay.
So um, in that section of the code, there are uh specific land uses, I think, which qualify for special permit. Um, some of them are specific, some of them are a little bit more general. I haven't read it in a while. But um, and there are stipulations that attach to process and stipulations that attach to other items with respect to how um these things are treated. Um, and so not every special permit application requires a new special permit code provision. Because there is already a section in our code that deals with these things. And so this particular special permit um request is not, does not fall within that code, otherwise we would not be writing a new legislation for new code. Um, that's generally a correct statement, isn't it, or not?
I'm not sure. Um, let me, let me state what what I believe to be the case, and let me see if 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 it follows what what you're what you're trying to say or or have said. Um, we have a code provision for special permits. Our our table of uses in the zoning code identifies what uses are subject to a special use permit. Um, there are, there's a section in the code that outlines the procedures that are followed uh for special use permit applications. There's also a section in the code that has general special use permit standards that apply to every single special use permit that is allowed in the in the town of Newcastle. And then for some of the special permit uses allowed in various districts, there are specific standards. Um, and those, that's the the list of, you know, you'll see a um you know, institutional use or uh my memory is is failing me right now to come up with a particular special permit use, but you'll see the name of the special permit use and a listing of this, the specific standards that apply only to that particular type of use. So what's being proposed here is to add to that list of specific uses, the NG zero special permit with its own specific special permit standards. So for this NG zero special permit, the general standards would apply that are existing in the code now. Um, that apply to every single special permit allowed in the town. And then you'd have an additional set of specific standards applicable to the NG zero special permit use.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. Um, to clarify something for me that um that I didn't quite understand, so that 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 works for me. Um, it's been, it's been said a number of times um in uh public meetings that, I think it was said recently, that this is just another special permit. And that uh there are, I think the number that was cited, there are, so far there have been like nineteen special permits. I may have that number wrong, but I think that's about right.
Something like that. Yeah, there's a lot of them.
That have, that have been applied for and that have been approved in town. And one of the things that struck me about all of that was that not all special permits are alike, clearly. And um, that's one of the reasons we have these sub provisions you just talked about that apply to specific uses um that um in order to deal with that particular situation. And so we are uh proposing a town board, the town is proposing to add to that list with special provisions for this particular use, unless I have that have that wrong.
No, that's correct.
So as I said, they're they're not all equal. And my feeling is, my concern is that this particular special permit language is applying to a covering or not covering for um providing for a a use which is such a scale and in such a location that I believe that we need to really be looking at the process of approving that legislation. It was maybe a little bit more careful look at it. And I I, as I was driving here tonight, I was thinking about the size of the project and why this in particular, in particular, why this concern might actually apply. I think if you take the project, the proposed project, the site, if you take the site and if you were to to layer it on top of South Greeley, I think the length of the site is about equal to the distance from the corner of one South Greeley, which is the building, which is at the corner of King and Greeley. I think the length of that of the uh fifty uh North Greeley extends all the way to the Bank of America Building. And I I'm just, I was thinking, well, gee whiz, just what if, here's a thought experiment, experiment. What if it were true that that was our site? That that was the site that was applying for by whatever process of accumulation of 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 consolidation of sites? What if that was the site that was under um, that was being um considered for a special permit designation? How would we look at that? What sort of review process, what sort of of criteria would we be putting into that special permit? And I I I'm guessing that, I'm thinking that, I'm hoping that we would give that very special attention. And so my thought is, I'm not sure that we are giving, just because we are in North Greeley and not South Greeley. I'm not sure that 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 the town is giving enough attention to in the in the legislation, enough attention to provisions that would actually, that that we would be looking at in South Greeley and ignoring a North Greeley. And I don't know for what reason. I mean, I think that we maybe as a town should have aspirations for North Greeley. And that this is the time to put those in place, especially since to decide what those are. And I don't think that that's been articulated yet. And to figure out uh what those are and to put them in place in the zoning so that any future development at fifty, whether it's this particular application which is coming, it's not an application yet. This particular application which appears to be coming. Um, or if it if that application for some reason goes away, and we've seen that happen before, uh, any further applicant uh for the property, and I would expect one would come pretty quickly, uh would be um subject to those stipulations that were put into the code now in the interest of having a a North Greeley neighborhood, however we might define that, um be developed there. And so it's my feeling that we really maybe ought to be having that conversation. Now, I'm not suggesting that we need to stop everything and do a whole and a whole master plan for North Greeley. I don't think that's necessary. I actually think that it might be possible to, once one looks at this question, and if one decides that there are things that maybe need to be added into the into the the special permit legislation, that this is the kind of thing that probably should be done in one or two paragraphs only. And I I I think that if we, if we don't at least examine that now, I I think we're probably doing a disservice to the town. So it was uh partially uh my thought that, and I think others maybe feel the same way, but it was my thought that we probably ought to be having a real conversation about that in the process right now with the town board. And if the town board chooses to invite the ARB, because I think they have a a role in helping us define what the character of the of the town will be in North Greeley. That we ought to be having that now as part of the public review process. And to be sure that those things are considered. I don't know what the outcome would be. I have no idea. But I think that it's important for for, you know, all of our best heads to get together in front of the public and stimulate a conversation that that gets us uh at least gets those things on the table now before we actually have legislation in place, because once legislation gets in place, a new code gets in place, it's going to be more difficult to have that conversation for the, I think, the reasons that are probably obvious to us all. So that's why uh I think maybe I'm I'm one of the ones who is in support of a, some sort of a outreach to the town board for a a a request to, for them to invite us to a um a joint meeting, a joint public meeting, and perhaps the ARB, if they think that's appropriate, or the and the ARB would like to attend to to discuss this before they close the public hearing.
Yeah, so Tom, I think what you just um outlined, I think, is helpful to kind of define the scope, kind of a spoiler alert for uh for what you want to talk to the town board about. Um, and like you said, if the town board wants to also invite the ARB, I think that's a great idea, too. Um, so in your request for a joint meeting with the town board, you might want to consider um a couple of sentences kind of summarizing. Um, you know, tho- those thoughts that you just expressed.
And I I do want, yeah, thank you. And I do want to just say that this is in the context of their referral to us.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right.
Understood.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, I think it's terrific that we flesh out our our request, Tom, with some of these thoughts, these process thoughts. Um, I think is, would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, and just um kind of continuing on the process, um just a couple of updates on that, too. Um, I obviously, you know, y'all probably know that the public hearing was opened recently. Um, it has been adjourned to May twenty-third. Um, and I do believe that the town board intends to reassemble the the working group that it had created. Um, I believe it recently added two members uh to the working group from the ARB. Uh, so again, kind of speaking to the importance of the ARB in this whole process. Um, I'm not sure yet about the the scope, you know, that the designated scope of review for the or the task for the working group at this time, but um, I think that working group is going to be kind of reactivated um shortly. Um, and I know town staff and and its outside consultants either are, will very soon be in the process of of undertaking um, it's, you know, due diligence review of of all the materials uh submitted by the applicant, so review memos should be uh forthcoming as well.
Okay.
Do you have a a heads up, uh Jennifer or Sabrina, on whether this working group, um, which I think is is terrific, whether the working group will be sitting um during the open public hearing uh process, or would it happen after after the hearing is closed?
I think the intent is for that to to that discussion to not occur at the public hearing and rather have the public hearing be for um, you know, residents, property owners of of the town to uh to provide their comments. The working group, um, you know, would provide their recommendations to the town board um as part of this this public hearing process.
So I'm sorry.
I imagine a representative of the working group could, you know, present their recommendations to the town board at a at a at the public hearing, but honestly, to my knowledge, the actual process for that has not been discussed yet.
Uh, I guess I didn't ask my question uh properly. My question was not whether it would happen at a public here, at a public hearing as part of that process, but it would happen within the public hearing timeframe.
Understood. Um, I believe that is the intent.
So that any any outcomes from that would be fed into, potentially should be fed into the public hearing process, so that people could comment on that.
Yeah, because there might be changes to the legislation, you know, as a result of recommendations from the working group. Um, and obviously, the public should have an opportunity to to review and comment on those changes.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jennifer. That's really very, very helpful. Helped me a lot. Try to get caught up here. Anyone else, any questions at all?
So I I I don't have questions, but I would, I I echo the the desire to have a a continued dialogue with the town board. Um, and um uh absolutely support the notion uh that the working group should meet again, um in addition to I mean, I guess it's it's in the town board's control, but it it sounds like there's a desire to have the working group meet again. We have a desire to have a joint meeting again, and um all that in during the uh public hearing process, not after it closes.
Right.
I guess, I, I'm sorry, Bob, Bob, go ahead.
All right, I thought that that Tom's thoughts about frankly um attaching some urgency uh to our our desire to get together uh would be important.
So um, I'm still not sold on this working group. Uh, I mean, I think it's great, and I've been, don't get me wrong, I appreciate the invitation, but it seems to me this is a matter of such import that that just picking a couple of people from each board uh maybe doesn't get the full discussion that that it really deserves. And I I don't understand why one wouldn't go ahead and have a joint meeting of of the whole boards. We we've done that before. We've done that before on this particular subject. Um, I would still, I would still suggest or ask that uh this board that we still send a memo out asking for a a joint uh board meeting. Um, it it's, it it doesn't seem to me as effective as it could be, especially when we have, I think there is some feeling of time pressure in all this uh for two members of a board to go back to the full board and report back what happened. And then we have three other members of that board saying, well, wait a minute, why didn't you talk about this? Why didn't you talk about that? Why did you come to that conclusion? Um, I feel uncomfortable representing um, you know, the other board members when they're not there. We all have excellent um experience in these things. And we all have And we all have a credible responsibility to be there, I think, especially on a project like this. And I think it's not only important for us to be able to contribute, I think it's important for everybody else to hear that contribution.
Yeah, I don't know that. Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Are you done? Okay. I I don't think anyone's suggesting that those two things be mutually exclusive. I think that you can ask for your joint meeting with with the town board. Obviously, we we have no control over whether the the town, what the town board does with the working group. It's a function of the town board and it has, you know, selected members of the ARB, members of the planning board to be part of that working group. But we don't, we don't control that process.
No, understood. I think this was really sort of a comment, not not to you, Jen, but to the but to the board here. And, you know, more meetings are better on this, the quicker the better. I mean, working groups, full board meetings, I think that's all great. All I wanted to say was that I think is a fundamental item that that ought to be meetings of the full board. There ought to be one meeting at least of the full boards, and if the ARB is invited, that I think that'd be great, too.
Yep. And I think we've heard from the town board in the past that they want to get together again with joint meetings. So I have this every indication that our request, I think, will be successfully responded to.
Great.
So I guess just in terms of closing loop on this administrative issue, is there a motion then from the board to you know, direct us or that we will put together a memo to to the town board sooner than later, articulating some of the urgency about the process itself and to get this memo out perhaps even by the end of this week?
I, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 And
Bob? I'd be happy to take a stab at that.
Yep.
Given that you're still recovering, and so I'd be happy to take a stab at that and get it to you in the next day or so. I'm going to be leaving town on Friday morning, but I'll get it to you before then.
Terrific.
I'll circulate the whole board, but just to sort of get a jump start on it, and then I'll just put it in your hands.
Fantastic. I think that's great. Thank you. Great. Anything else, anyone? If not, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
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 All right, great, all right, very well. Thank you, guys.